Good morning, thank you. I am going to call our meeting to order today, May 27, 2025. We will start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Dr. Tim Barnett. He's the senior pastor of Heritage Hills Baptist Church.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Father, thank you for this time in this place. Thank you for Rockdale County. Thank you for government. The only thing older than government as an institution is the family. And you have established government because when groups of people get together, there needs to be an orderly system, and we're thankful for that. Lord, you've said that it is for our good, and we believe that what you have created is for our good. So, Lord, I pray today that you will give a great spirit of wisdom to these commissioners, that you will guide and direct them in the decisions that they make. For the people who are here, who will be discussing issues and items, I pray that you will give them wisdom and give them an understanding of your will for their lives. Lord, I know that you are in control of all that goes on in our world. But I also know that you work through the lives of people. So I pray you will work through the lives of these commissioners today for our good and for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett. Now we'll move to special recognitions and presentations. The first one is going to be the Foster Care Friends proclamation. Is anyone here to accept that?
You can't read that.
Everybody read it.
Yes, ma'am, please. Thank you. She's going to read it from here, and then we'll come down and take a photo with you guys.
Okay, sure, we'll do that.
Sure. What a nice group.
So by the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation. Whereas Foster Care Friends, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded 11 years ago by Dr. Shaverne Jeter, has tirelessly dedicated itself to uplifting and empowering the foster care, adoptive, homeless, and kinship care communities throughout Rockdale, Newton, DeKalb, Fulton, Gwinnett, and Clayton Counties. And whereas the organization strengthens the foster care system by serving children and youth, as well as foster parents, social workers, Department of Family and Children's Services personnel, and child placing agencies, ensuring holistic care and community resilience. And whereas Foster Care Friends, now in its eighth year as a wraparound provider for the Georgia Department of Juvenile Justice, delivers criminogenic needs counseling for at-risk youth ages 12 to 19, including SB 440 youth who are being rehabilitated while on house arrest. And whereas the organization offers various services to stabilize, uplift, and empower families and youth in their time of need. As an accredited and licensed training institution, the organization provides transformative education and certifications in CPR, first aid, AED, darkness-to-light sexual abuse prevention, impact self-defense, and chaplain training, equipping the community with tools for protection, resilience, and hope. And whereas Foster Care Friends provides vital resources to the community through the care closet, giving the community access to free clothing, toiletries, toys, and year-round school supplies to those in need. And whereas, in honor of National Foster Care Month and celebration of their extraordinary service, Rockdale County commends Foster Care Friends for their compassionate commitment and lasting impact within our community. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Foster Care Friends Appreciation Day. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 27th day of May 2025. Signed, Janice Fennesse, Chairwoman, Tawanya Smith, Commissioner Post 1, Doreen Williams, Commissioner Post 2. Congratulations, thank you.
And so, Madam Vice Chair, we also have a second proclamation in honor of National Foster Care Month. So if any of these participants would like to stay at the podium while the second proclamation is read in honor of this month, that would also be good.
Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, of course, yes, foster care, yes, 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 yes. All right. All right. Whereas families are the primary source of love and support for children and youth, and the state of Georgia thrives when children are in a safe and loving home. And whereas, in Georgia, there are approximately 11,377 children and youth in foster care being provided with comforting and stable homes by compassionate foster families. And whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families, who open their hearts and homes to support children whose families are in crisis, play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby helping steer young people into successful adulthood. And whereas several private and public social service agencies in Rockdale County work to increase awareness of the needs of foster children in our community, and the role we must play in addressing this community responsibility. And whereas, Rockdale County recognizes organizations like the Rockdale Department of Family and Children's Services, and we commend them on the work they do for the lives of the youth in our community. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim May 25 as Foster Care Month. In witness whereof, we here, hereunto, set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 27th day of May 2025. And it's signed, Janice Fennesse, our Chairwoman, Tawanya Smith, Commissioner Post 1, and Doreen Williams, Commissioner Post 2. Thank you, foster care families, for all you do for Rockdale County. Okay, now we will open our meeting up for public comment. Is there anyone who has not filled out a form that needs to? And would like to have something to say today? All right, we'll go with our first person, which is Mr. George Kelchak.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Citizens, employees. George Kelchak, Rockdale Sewer Water Conservation District. In front of you this morning, I wanted to provide to you, our board members, in collaboration with the Rockdale County School System, City of Conyers, and Rockdale County, had the most high school students, both public and private, enrolled in the yearly Georgia Sewer Water Conservation Commission Natural Resource Conservation Workshops at AVAC University in Tifton, Georgia. We had 18 of 96 out of this one county. We're the highest county in the state. That's 19%. So congratulations to everybody getting the word out. Secondly, in front of you, and I've got an owner's manual here. Recently, you received communiqué from me along with pictures regarding our current tree ordinance in Rockdale County. And it leads you to what you've seen is clear-cutting of our properties for development with no preservation of mature trees. And if you look at Georgia 138 and Ebenezer Road, you'll know what I'm talking about. Lee Kark, who is the community forester for the Georgia Forestry Commission, and that information has been provided to the director and deputy director of your planning department. She goes around the state. She's an attorney and an arborist, and develops mature tree ordinances for counties and municipalities, and so the gold standard of tree ordinances. You know, we only have 27% of our land left in tree forestation here in Rockdale County. There's six impacts of mature tree and forest that have on urban areas, according to the U.S. Tree Foundation. Environmental benefits throughout the United States, $73 billion. $65 billion in carbon containment, $5 billion in air pollution filtration, and $3 billion in stormwater management. Although the investment intimidates certain developers, well-planted and mature-maintained trees offer decades of unyielding services. Just a few. Property values, $31.5 billion added annually here in the United States for communities that have mature tree ordinances. Property values. Promote the public health and services as a sense of belonging. When you see a mature tree, it makes you feel good, not something that's cut down. Promote the habitat for our wildlife that we have here throughout the United States and here in Rockdale County. And finally, erosion management. And it keeps your water table where it needs to be. So I feel as though that shortly, we need to get on top of this tree ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carl Morgan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to come and talk about property taxes, and I would like to publicly request that the commissioner do an audit of the tax assessor's office. Since 2017, our property has not been depreciating. For some reason, the tax assessor's office is still using the schedule for 2017, which means they're eight years behind in depreciating people's property. Why is that important? Because everybody's properties depreciate each year. That's normal wear and tear on the property. There's no need to freeze our depreciation, because every year, our houses depreciate. And so that's part of the evaluation process when they're assessing people's property, because the property goes up, and then you have to deduct the depreciation from the property. And they're not doing that. In addition to the lack of depreciation, they also have been tagging houses with what's called a neighborhood adjustment. A couple of years ago, my house got, my neighborhood got a 83% neighborhood adjustment, which means a property that's fair market valued at $200,000 would now be valued at $360,000. I think that's excessive. They have not given me any reason or justification for these neighborhood adjustments. And then several years back, they had changed my property grade on my property. Every property, when it's originally built, get a property grade. For some reason, the tax assessor's office decided they wanted to change the property grade system over there, and instead of notifying the taxpayers, they just went ahead and adjusted upward. My went from 1.35 to 1.40, which again is an increase in my property value. And there are several people in the community that's very unhappy about the taxes or the tax value and the taxes as it goes today. And I think that the commissioners should look into and do an audit of the tax assessor's office to make sure that this is accurate, that they're accurately valuing people's property, and not overvaluing people's property just for revenue's sake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, we will now move to the approval of our agenda.
So I move to approve the agendas published.
I second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you have any questions regarding it? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Now we'll move to the approval of our minutes from May 13, 2025. And I move to approve these minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a second and a motion. Do you have any questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. This motion carries. We'll move to our unfinished business, and there is none. Now we'll go to new business.
All right. Item 249 is with Rochester DCCM through the Water Resources Department. This is for the water main improvements to remove dead-end mains, pre-qualified firm, and the amount is $52,900. This is for four to six weeks from the notice to proceed. It's through the Water Enterprise Fund, and it is a budgeted item. And Madam Vice Chair and Commissioner Williams, would you like me to read all the contracts together? And you take them collectively, or would you like to take each item?
It's okay with me if we do them all.
Sure.
All right. So I will keep going through the contracts. Then that's item 250, Built for Teams Incorporated through the Human Resources Department for Position Management and Advanced Organizational Design. This is change order number one to contract 2024-195 to include onboarding and implementation fee. The amount is $7,500 a nonrecurring fee. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 251 is with Dell Marketing LP through the Technology Services Department for Microsoft Enterprise License Update. This is change order number six to contract 2020-72. It's an enterprise update statement outlining Microsoft Office 365 license renewal at no cost. This is for signature only. And item 252 is with the Daily Policy Group through the Board of Commissioners Office for Federal Legislative Services at $8,000 a month. This is for one year with automatic renewals for two additional one-year terms. This is through the general fund, and this is a budgeted item.
So I move to approve these contracts as presented.
I second the motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion carries.
And would you also like me to read through the requisitions collectively as well?
Yes, these are all budgeted items, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, thank you. Item 253 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Southeastern Aggreg Systems Incorporated for additional funding on the blanket PO due to the failure of chart recorders. This is an additional $11,039.80. The original PO was $15,000. So the new PO total is $26,039. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 254 is a requisition through the General Services Department for QK4. This is task order number three for the Trails Master Agreement, contract 2002-83. This is to add $143,449.61. The original PO was $1,478,837.21. This makes the new PO total $1,622,286.82. This is 20% splash funded, 80% GDOT reimbursement, and is a budgeted item. Item 255 is a requisition through the EMA Department for LumenServe. This is year four of a five-year service contract. The term is February 22, 2025, through February 21, 2026. The amount is $25,668. This is through the Emergency 911 Tower Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 256 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Echo Tech for the hypo-pump for the water treatment plant for demo trial. The amount is $15,325. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. And item 257 is a requisition through the Finance Department for OpenGov. This is the Annual Software Services Agreement for Management Reporting. The amount is $63,560.79. This is a renewal, and the term is May 1, 2025, through April 20, 2026. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve these requisitions as presented.
I second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, and the next two items are expenditure requests. Item 258 is an expenditure request for evidence-based associates through the juvenile court. This is a functional family therapy services for March 2025. This is contract 2022-173. The amount is $17,988.16. This is grant-funded and is a budgeted item. Item 259 is expenditure request to the City of Conyers for Public Relations. This is a cosponsor of the Red, White &amp; Boom 2025. The amount is $25,000. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve these expenditure requests as presented.
I second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody that opposes anything? All right. All right, motion carries.
All right. Item 260 is a request for surplus of equipment through the Fire Rescue Department and through the juvenile court.
I move to approve these items as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a second and a motion. Do you have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? All righty.
Okay, the next two contracts are submitted for ratification. Item 261 is with Georgia Municipal Association through the Board of Commissioners Office for Equipment Lease for two fire trucks in the amount of $2,169,944 for three years with an annual payment schedule of $723,314.67 each from November 30, 2025 through November 30, 2027. This is submitted for ratification. Item 262 is with the Georgia Strategy Group through the Board of Commissioners Office, an independent contractor for public relations and marketing. It's $8,000 per month at three months with automatic one-month renewal terms. This is a budgeted item and submitted for ratification.
I move to approve these contracts as presented.
I second the motion. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. All right, now we have board comments. I'll yield to you, ma'am.
You want to start with me?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I hope everybody enjoyed the Memorial Day weekend, the long weekend, the opportunity to think about our veterans, especially those that have lost their lives in the process of serving our country. The, I attended the Memorial Day Celebration yesterday at it, well, it was supposed to be at Black Shoals Park, but they moved it to the nearby church. That is always such an honor to be there. And personally, of course, I feel very connected to that, as my husband's a Vietnam veteran, and I lived through part of his service in the Vietnam War. So it's personal. But it's also remembering how vast the military service is and what they provide. Tommy Klack, who is, who used to be the person in charge of Georgia Veterans Services, excuse me, here in Rockdale County, if you know Tommy. He lost both legs and an arm in Vietnam. And he was the keynote speaker yesterday. He made a couple of comments that were very interesting to me. During World War II, over 14% of the population, and I don't know if that was just men or if that was the entire population, because we know both men and women served them, but over 14% served in the military. It dropped to 9% during Korea, and it dropped to 6% or 7% during Vietnam. Currently, there is half of 1% serving in the military of our population. And he said that, when he speaks to high school students especially, he talks to them about the value for them personally of serving in the military, the discipline and the teamwork that they learn, but the need that we have as a country to make sure that we still have a solid military. My favorite part, of course, is when they play the songs from each of the branches of the military and the veterans from each service stand up during that part. And I think it's, it really makes me proud, because they are so proud of their service and the opportunity they had to serve, and the branch that they served in. They're proud of that, too. So it was, the other thing that I really noted, and I mentioned this when I gave the welcoming remarks, was that the crowd at the service-
welcoming remarks, was that the crowd at the service of celebration is mostly my age and a little bit younger. And I encourage them to bring their children, who obviously are adults now, but invite them, but especially the grandchildren, and bring them, and let them see, get that history, and let them see what the services are about. So the other comment I had was in relationship to Mr. Kellacheck's comments about the forest, the forestry.
The tree ordinance.
The tree ordinance. Now's a good time to talk about that, and a really important time to talk about that, because we are going through our UDO right now. And I agree with you on how beautiful those trees are. One of the opportunities I had this week was, this weekend, was to take my husband out for a drive. And just driving through those areas where there's lots of greenery, lots of trees, was very, just refreshing and relaxing. And when we cut down everything, we lose that. And so I definitely am in favor of doing that and making sure that that gets done. Those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I would like to congratulate our graduates. We had graduations last week. Congratulations to the class of 2025. And also, our beach opened on Sunday. If you're taking a chance to partake and enjoy our beach, make sure you do that before the summer's over. I think it's through Labor Day that they're open. And that is it. I would like to leave you with this. To create a beautiful day, let gratitude be your guiding light. Do we have a need for executive session today?
No, Madam Vice Chair.
All right, well, thank you.